Nope. Whiteboard's out of clock. Now I'm hitting the phones so it refreshes. Hey Marcus, how'd it go? Good. Good evening. Today is Tuesday, November 14th, 2023 at 7:00 PM. And I'll call this Fairfield Township Board of Trustees regular meeting to order. Ms. Schultz, we call the roll, please.
Trustee Birding.
Present.
Trustee Harkemaier.
Here.
Trustee McAfee.
Here.
Okay, for tonight's invocation, we have Pastor Andrew Hancock from the Allison Avenue Church. Could you all please stand? And then Pastor, will you lead us in the pledge once you're finished with that invocation?
Absolutely. Let's ask the Father for mercies. Lord, I confess, you are King of Heaven and King over this, your creation, and as sovereign over this nation, the state of Ohio, and over this community, Fairfield Township. Lord, I ask that you would be merciful to each officer and trustee that you have appointed before me, that you would fill them with your wisdom to make the right decisions that best fits our community. Lord, also grant to them resources that our community would benefit. And oh, Lord, I ask also that your hand of mercy would protect our police department, our fire and EMS. And oh, Lord, above all, I ask that you would magnify the name of Christ and whose salvation is found. Lord, we receive your mercies with thankful hearts. In Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Have a wonderful evening. Okay, there's no presentations this evening and there's no old business, so we'll move into item number three, items for board discussion. First one is letter A, ambulance purchase. Chief Thomas?
So at the request of the administrator, I had them update the quote and provide a updated quote. It contains within that quote the same ability to exit the contract all the way up to the pre-build meeting, which is estimated to be six months before they actually would start to build the contract vehicle. So that gives us about two and a half years. There was also questions regarding changing the chassis. If midstream, we decided to change chassis, we would go to the back of the line to start over again. That's all the information I have for you.
Okay. Any questions, comments to the chief or to the administrator? So Ms. Monarch, can you just explain to the board what brought this back up to as an item for board discussion?
So, thank you, yes. For the medic purchase, the thought process behind that was we're approaching end of year and the EMS fund is very, it's doing very well, it's healthy, and it made sense to lock in a better price because of the time lag coming in, how long it's taking us to receive the medic. So my thought was it might be okay, again, board dependent, but it made sense to get it in the books this year. Doesn't impact next year, but it's in process and then the new chief would have the ability to make a change. So the thought was just, I was real concerned about watching salaries and what that did, but the EMS fund is 1,100, 1.1 million. You want to pay to sustain that?
Any comments or questions from the board? So I know that I had concerns back when we first discussed this, and I think it was June or July, I remember? It was back in the beginning of the summer if I remember correctly. And we didn't know where we were going to land on fireman salaries. We didn't know what direction a potential new chief may go. I think we have a better understanding about where that may be now, even though we don't have a chief selected. But, and I think that now that we know that the EMS fund could sustain that purchase, I'm comfortable with getting it, getting in the system and in the rotation, and then the incoming chief could potentially make adjustments to the purchase to fit their needs and the department needs. That's just my thought process. I'd love to hear other people's thoughts on that as well. Trustee McAfee?
Well, you know, we're close to hiring a chief. Maybe we still wait 30 days and make some kind of determination. If it sounds like if you decide to change the chassis, you go to the back of the line anyway.
Right.
It's going to change the price, so.
Okay. I think it's good to have this discussion. I tend to agree with you that I think before anything is submitted, we should, because we could address this at our December of the 12th. We've got a resolution on December the 12th. If we want to move forward with it or not. Is that enough time? Do they have to have something right away or can it wait until our December 12th meeting?
I would have to reach out to them and see if there's any price increase pending between now and then. This price is already $44,450 more than the previous price, so I don't know how fast they're increasing. I could reach out to them, but I don't have that information.
Okay. Yeah.
The only thing I was going to add is I don't want that to feel, I don't want the board to feel strong-armed because some of the conversations that we had with potential candidates was looking at different types of vehicles too. So that was just something, I mean, to be fair, I just thought I should bring that up so we're remembering all sides. And that's not a knock against chief or it's just, I knew we had discussed that and thought I should point that out.
Yeah. Yeah, again, my original, my original thought process, I didn't want to pigeonhole a new chief into a particular vehicle. And I don't think out of the candidates, we had serious discussions about what type of vehicle they would want. I think we kind of left that open. And maybe that is something that if we could wait until we have a decision and offer, an accepted offer, maybe we should let that go and let them help us make that decision. So, but, so I appreciate the need. I would like to wait maybe 30 days to see. We did tell the candidates, we would like to have someone in place by the end of the year. And so I think if we are able to stick by that timeline, they could do that with Chief Thomas's help. Or Chief Thomas could still order that with some input from the new chief, the new incoming chief. So I do appreciate the work. I do appreciate the fact that it did go up another large amount. But again, I don't want to rush to a decision based on that. So, because if they come back and say, well, you got this chassis, but I'd rather have this other kind of chassis, then we're back at the beginning of the line anyway. So I think I would rather wait than do something this evening. It's my opinion. We don't have a resolution or even a motion or, okay. Okay. And Chief Thomas, tell us a little about the Genesis Rescue Equipment.
The current equipment at Station 212 is hydraulic and we're being told that they are phasing out servicing and testing and the recommendation is to switch over to the new battery-operated systems, which a few years back, we bought the Genesis system for the equipment at Station 211. So looking again at the funds that were left coming up to the end of the year, felt it was a good opportunity to look at this as a capital purchase and replacing the current hydraulic with the battery-operated that would be completely compatible with what we have at the other station. Because right now, we have two separate systems. And then the old equipment would be put on the reserve truck as long as it continues to function. And once it doesn't, then we would just dispose of it at that point.
And so currently, our firefighters have to know how to run two different systems. Is it, are they similar or just?
The tools function generally in the same manner. It's a matter of the power plant. We have a gas-powered power plant that needs to be maintained and it has hoses that have to be hooked up to the units. So there's limitations on how far from the truck you can get unless you pull the power plant out of the truck and take it with you. Whereas the battery-operated are self-contained, so you can go down over the side of the embankment, work on a car without having to drag the hoses with you.
Makes sense. Comments from the administrator on that?
They haven't even highly discussed it. It'd be a high level.
Thoughts from the trustees?
I don't have it in front of me. It was 45,000 or 47,000, I think.
$44,360. Diane did prepare a resolution in the event that the board was entrusted in passing this. And of course, I'm not the law director, but I'm sure you could weigh in on them doing it as a motion as well. Thank you. Thank you.
Are there any concerns or questions you have for the chief? With that being said, I make a motion to amend the agenda to add the resolution. Let's see, it would be 23-148 to the agenda, which would be resolution approving the purchase of a new Genesis Rescue Equipment from Palau Rescue Systems for state contract. I move to add that to the agenda. Any questions or comments?
EMS. EMS.
And is that on the resolution, paid out of that fund?
She put safety service. Do you want to update that to EMS? Yeah. Oh, no. Okay. You guys can decide.
What'd you recommend?
Probably EMS.
Do I need to amend that motion to put the resolution? Because we haven't resolution yet. Because I just moved to add that resolution. Okay. Any questions? Okay, this is just a motion to add this to the agenda. Ms. Schultz, will you call the roll, please?
Trustee Birding.
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier.
Yes.
Trustee McAfee.
Yes.
Okay, item C is curb replacement for 2024. Mr. Bennett?
I believe Diane placed in your packet the curb repair request. Pretty basic, broke down street, the total feet of curb, and then ADA crosswalks. That's basically the handicap accessible ramps. That is something that is required, that any time that we come in and do paving, that all those need to be ADA compliant. Appears that the total curb is 3,739 feet and a total of 53 handicap ribs. We would just like to try to get this put out for bid as quickly as possible.
Your estimated cost?
I have no idea, to be honest with you.
$50 on the budget?
I'd say it's more than that. That's the deal we were getting with the other gentleman that used to do it.
$100?
At least 100. Like I said, this is just basically trying to allow us to put it out for bid.
Then we'll know.
Then we'll know. And we can determine where we go from there.
And this already is on the agenda as a motion? In our motions. Any other questions for Mr. Bennett?
I know there's another in here about tracing next year. Are we doing Morse for this year?
No.
And we're not going to do it next year either?
Next year? Possibly.
Well, I mean, the resolution is for 2024, right?
Yeah. No, we're not doing it next year.
You're not doing it for three years in a row?
Morse has.
Striping Morse?
Morse has been striped.
This year?
Not this year, last year.
Yeah, I mean, it's a busy streak, so I just want to make sure that, you know, we ought to be doing it every other year or every third year or something because there's still spots that are already faded and it'll be, of course, worse in the fall. So I'm just trying to get an idea there. We could always add it and do it next year or whatever, but. Anyway, keep an eye on that, please.
Yes.
Okay. Item D, 2024 property tax rates. Ms. Schultz?
Yes, so if you're, I'm sure you're aware that last meeting, we passed a resolution to reduce our property tax rates. Not much longer after that, Mr. Stein from the Auditor's Office came back and said, basically, House Bill 187 was likely to pass and therefore he appreciated our efforts to reduce the rates, but it was no longer necessary because with House Bill 187, everyone's will be reduced somewhat. So then, I'm sorry, that was two meetings ago. Then last meeting, we passed a resolution to accept the rates. And those rates were the higher rates Mr. Stein gave us, not the lower rates. So we basically have two contradictory resolutions. One, to approve rates that are higher, and a resolution to accept the lower rates. Mr. McAfee came back and said, since we, and I know you guys were copied, since we passed a resolution, we need to stick to the lower rates. But then we passed the resolution at the higher rate. So I just need a board decision. Mr. Stein said, you know, giving us till tonight was enough time, but we need to make a decision as a board and let me know, so I can let him know. If we're going to reduce the rates, that's fine. But if House Bill 187 does pass, then it's going to be a double hit because it, we're going to have the reduction of that and then we're going to reduce again. If it doesn't pass, then we're in good shape. But right now, I just asked for an update tonight from Mr. Salmon and there is no update. I mean, at this point, it's a 50-50 shot if it's going to pass.
It's not going to pass.
So my support is still for the original resolution of the lower rates, excepting what, the same payment that we got this year.
Okay. So I just need a board decision on what to tell Mr. Stein?
So I think I would like clarity on this. Whenever we decide, we need to have a resolution rescinding something we passed. Yes?
If you're going to change it, if you're going to stick with what you did before, you don't need to do that.
But Ms. Schultz is telling us that we voted on two things that are in opposite. So we voted for A.
You voted for, your resolution rolled back the property tax. I don't know what was in the.
The rates one?
The rates one.
What I'm not sure of, and maybe we can read to be clear, but I don't know if we said we're going to collect at that rate or just that we accept the rate. I think that that's two totally different things where we can accept a rate but agree not, I mean, we can accept a rate but not collect at that rate, but we did accept the rate. So I don't know, that would be illegal, you know, if that, if, I don't know if we need to rescind it, if we decide to keep the lower rate, if we just do nothing because we didn't say we were going to collect at the higher rate. We just said we would accept those.
I think the way to go, you're speaking with somebody at the Auditor's Office, and I think the way to go is if the board decides to do it this way, to say, we're going to stick with the rates that we have in the resolution. And then if we need to change the other resolution, well, we don't need to change that. And then you'll give us direction.
Okay.
Does that sound reasonable?
Yes, and I can always bring the resolution next time. He just wants a decision. So once the decision's made, if we're going to rescind the original, that's fine. If we're going to stick, if we're not going to rescind it and keep to the lower rate, I think I need to tell him that and then ask if he wants a new, to send us new rates.
Let's play devil's advocate. Worst case scenario, it does pass. We accept, we accept it to be, what we did is we accept it to collect only as much, only as many funds as we collected the prior year, to not raise it. So if a new legislation passes, how is that going to be a double hit? Because we always, we said, we're only going to collect X amount of dollars. I mean, help me.
Well, the way, the attachments to the resolution gave us new rates. With those rates, we would collect the same. So if we use those rates at the higher value to get us to collect the same, I, after talking to Mr. Stein, I don't think he would say, we'll still collect the same. I think he would collect the same. I think he would means we'll collect it, would it be.
So in estimation, what would the cost difference be?
It could be, it could be substantial if rates drop a lot, if House Bill 187 passes. I personally don't know what House Bill 187 is going to reduce the values by. Is it going to be, I mean, there's talk about it just being for seniors and no one else. There's talk about it going, you know, everybody's going down. There, who knows? But I mean, I think it could be.
House, what you said, your averages of the one year highest rate. So if the double hit goes against us, we know we're only saving $250,000 to begin with, so maybe we'll only get 225. But, but they gave us bad information is why we did the second one.
Well, I think it was the information they knew at the time. Personally, that's what I think.
He said we didn't need to do it. And then he sent us the rates, which, you know, I thought was going to be based on what we said we were going to do.
Okay. Yeah, I agree. He said we didn't need to do it and then he sent us the higher rates because he said he didn't need to do it, which maybe wasn't his call. And maybe he should have said, would you like to rescind this? Because House Bill 187, at that time, they thought was going to pass. And then when I talked to him later, now he's like, I don't know. Now it's, it's like, I don't know. Now it's, it's just a lot of back and forth.
So if it does pass, do we have the ability to rescind?
I think it'll be too late then because they have to certify the rates.
It's almost too late now.
It's almost too late now, yes. Because the rates were due by 10-1, they extend them to 11-1 for, because of all this, and now he's given me until after our meeting to.
So we sent them, we sent them the resolution that agreed to accept the old amount at whatever rate that was. And then when he got it, that's when he said, oh, you don't need to do that.
Yeah, like a week or two later.
So we voted again with the tax resolution. And apparently that, we had the wrong rates on there, I guess. So that's the one, in my opinion, we should rescind if we're going to rescind.
So what's this going to do to our township income levels then? If both of these, say, we accept the lower rate, the three-year average takes hold. I'm concerned about our cash position if we say we're not going to take that because is that going to put us on a faster path to having to hit a levy? I mean, what's this going to do to our cash position?
I mean, I honestly don't know what the, the value of your real estate will go to the average of three years instead of just sales that were in the past year. You know, I have no idea based on real estate what that would do. I think obviously it'll go down. They went up 42%. So if you just use common sense and say a third, it'll go down a third because you're using a three-year average now.
But you were voting to pick last year.
Yes.
So the 42% would be for this year, then you'd have last year if it was four.
True, so it'd just be the difference. Yeah, I mean, it's going to, I just don't know. I just don't know, unfortunately.
Because I know we tried to do a good deed here and I'm glad that we did, but I'm very concerned that we're going to impact our income. And as we know, we need this to pay salaries and medics and everything else that we need to buy. So I'm concerned that, that we could potentially double hit or take a multi-level hit on that cash position and our income.
This doesn't affect any of the fire, police, or it affects.
Correct. Road and Bridge and General Fund.
The inside mills for the.
Road and Bridge and General Fund.
And again, we knew when we did this, it was going to save about $250,000.
I think it was like 192. Yes.
Whatever the number was. So now maybe it only saves, or maybe we give up 220 or whatever, another 10%. That's not going to affect any, anything we do as far as all of our safety services or anything.
Well, okay, so.
The inside village.
I got you.
The general fund and the gas tax or whatever the other one is.
So fair point, but I think that would also relate to, I mean, we just talked about the curb replacement and that that's going to be upwards of $100 a foot. We've got a pretty aggressive paving schedule for next year. And then I think we're all concerned about preserving that general fund. So I'm just voicing this as a concern that if we, if we continue down this path, I'm concerned that it might, it might impact our income for years. And I'm really hoping not to go for a levy anytime soon. So I'm just concerned about the potential income that this could, could do to the township.
Well, and I understand that point, but we did say it was just for the one year.
Well, and if that's the case, then I'm all right with it. But if this is the kind of thing where it's going to be compounded and where it's going to impact things next year or the year after that, I'm fine with one year.
Yeah, we think, we just.
Fine with that. But it, but that's, I think the question I heard is, this is something that can, we can look at in another year that could be changed based on the property values and if this House Bill passes and everything else.
We set our rates every year.
And it was, sorry, just so you know, it was 178. We were giving up 16, 1, hold on, let me make sure that's right.
So as long as this is not, if it's for one year, I'm fine with it. But if this is something that's going to impact or have some sort of a tail on it that is going to impact our position, then I think we might want to think about it a little bit more.
Yeah, I think we're only going to collect 178 instead of 2.
I'm sorry, it was 61 for the general fund and 192 for Road and Bridge. So you were close, Mr. McAfee. Like, yeah, 254. So, I mean.
It's the first time for everything, Joe.
You were actually 4,000 off.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So like I said, I don't know what the difference would be, but I just wanted to bring it to the board because I didn't want to just make a decision based on one trustee or on my own, so.
I'm okay with the way that we passed it. I'm okay with the way that we passed it. And I don't, I agree, I don't think it's going, I don't think the legislation will pass. And even if it does, it's not going to be that big of a difference for us.
And it won't happen for the first installment, so, um, that's the only way we can help our property taxes, these property taxes. So we're going to, we want the first resolution, excepting the lower amount is what we want.
Yep, I got it. Okay.
This is the auditor, auditor's office, telling that.
Okay.
That if we need to make any change to the rates, we accept.
Do the resolution next, okay. Okay, that's all I had, thank you.
Any other questions?
The only other comment they're making at those town hall meetings is, uh, 2023 is is up strong again. So even the rates that they're doing for for 2023, or, you know, they're, they're still adding in new construction and the rates are up, so this is not going to end with this round. We just, they they talk about eight out of 10 of the school districts are at the 20-mil floor, they're getting the full impact. Fairfield and Lakota are not, thank goodness. But then again, we just got through back taxes from just a couple of years ago, everybody saw that, so it's, it's a topic we all need to be concerned about.
Great, okay, thank you. Uh, we move on to communication, but no one has signed up to speak and I don't see anybody in the audience, so we move on to committee reports. TID, trustee McAbby?
We had no meeting this week, had light, light agenda and did not have a forum. December meeting, I want to say it's the first Monday in December, it's a little bit different. And that, and that comes out, I'll forward it to the board.
Okay, thank you. Trust Harkemaier, EMA, OKI, Clout?
Okay, nothing really on EMA. On OKI, um, there are some additional grants that are available. One is called the Carbon Reduction Grant and there is a second round of funding that is available. This could be for, um, charger, charging stations and different things like that. There is a virtual workshop tomorrow, November 15th, uh, where they, where they will talk about, uh, working on the applications. So if Mrs. Monderhar or Mr. Goins might be interested in looking at that or attending that, uh, but there is up to a million dollars available in Ohio and you can submit up to three applications per jurisdiction. There is another, uh, grant pool that's available, it's called the Climate Pollution Reduction Act. This fund is, uh, it is funded at 100, 200 to 500 million in grants with no local match. There are a number of different things that it can be used on, but probably, um, for example, solar tree canopy. I was thinking that solar would probably be one of the things that we could potentially look at for Fairfield Township, maybe putting solar on roofs or something like that. But this also does have a, uh, rather aggressive timeline. I think the application would be due April 1st for that, but there's some other, um, timelines with that that would be, uh, that would be important as well. So that might be something, um, that staff might want to reach out to and and research a little bit more. Let's see, the Transportation Improvement Program funded some, um, monies for the Butler County RTA and also for the Middletown Transit Service. So that was a good help to Butler County. And then another thing that we talked about in the Land Use Committee, um, which I serve on, it's kind of a subset of OKI, it's that, they are looking at, um, if you do submit a grant, they want, you get more credit for having an up-to-date comprehensive plan, which kind of made me think, how old is our comprehensive plan? And I think it's probably older than five years. So I think it would be a very good idea for us to dust that off and and to get that up to speed with some of the new things that are out there. And if we did end up going for a grant at some point in time, uh, they do definitely take that into consideration in their point scoring systems. And, uh, Clout, nothing there either?
I have a question about the comprehensive plan. If you want, are wanting it to be dusted off, I believe it was done by a committee previously and that was submitted for trustee approval at some point. So if you're wanting that brought back out, we'd need to ask staff to organize another committee, is that what you're asking?
I would say I would like to have staff look at that first before a committee is organized. Well, let's.
I think it was 2017.
So I would just say, let's, let's take a look at that, let's dust that off, let's see whereabouts that is. I think if it's within that five-year threshold. And then I think it probably is just a good idea to take a look at that anyways and and see. I'm not asking for a big committee or a big production out of it, but I think we should start with staff taking a look at that and, uh, and seeing where it is, seeing if there's any gaps or if there's anything that we need to bring back into that.
So let's give, uh, staff a target to report back to us. How about our first meeting in January? Would that be okay?
Sure.
Give them 60 days? Or would, maybe it should be February because with holidays, we might be hiring a new fire chief to work on paperwork and things like that. So let's say the first meeting in February. Would that be okay? That will give them a good 60 to 90 days to work on it. Okay? Just to look at it and say, here's our recommendations or everything looks great or whatever. Okay? We just give you a target, you know when we're expecting it by. Any other questions for trustee Harkemaier? Thank you so much and, um, thanks for attending the OKI and missing out on the Veterans Day event.
I did, I, I was very conflicted with that. I do apologize for missing the veterans ceremony. I heard wonderful things about it, but that's why I wasn't there was because I had the commitment to OKI and then, of course, the, uh, Land Use Committee, which I was appointed to serve on as well. And I was recently named vice chair of that committee, so kind of needed to be there.
Well, you're all looking for things to do, so. Okay, uh, we'll move on to item six, fiscal officers' recommendations and reports. Ms. Schultz?
Okay, first thing I have is I'm working on the budget, I'm hoping to have it to this weekend, so I know you'll all look forward to that good reading. The second thing is, don't forget last meeting, I think, um, I mentioned about the ARPA project that the county gave us $150,000 for, for underserved communities. I know I told you you had plenty of time because they weren't spending the money until 2026, but we did get an email saying that they would like the projects by December. So please think about that and.
I'm sorry, by the end of December?
Yes.
Okay, not by December.
Yeah, no, sorry, by the end of December, yes. So if you want to think about it, we could come up with a project next meeting to submit to them.
Well, I think we gave staff some ideas. And so maybe if you could bring this back as an item for board discussion and then we could have, um, a motion to approve a project at our December the 12th meeting.
Okay. I knew we had said we'd talk about it in December, I didn't expect it to be quickened, but.
Is that good with the trustees to do that? Okay.
Okay. The third thing is, last week we did pay out the first responders' retention bonuses, that all went well, so just want to let you know that. And the very last thing is that, um, last week, um, the county paid $307,000 in paving on our behalf, which you guys knew was coming, it was ARPA money, but it did just get submitted. And so I booked that entry to recognize the revenue and the expense today. So, um, just want to let you know that got paid. So that's all I have.
Great, any questions for Ms. Schultz? Okay, next item is to recommend a motion to suspend the reading of the minutes for the following meetings. Trustee, regular meeting, October 10th, 2023. Special meeting, trustee special meeting, October 16th, 2023. Trustee special meeting, October 17th, 2023. Trustee special meeting, October 26th, 2023. Is there a motion to suspend?
No move.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Ms. Schultz, will you call the roll, please?
Trustee McAbby?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
Trustee Birding?
Yes, and that motion passes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
No move.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Ms. Schultz, will you call the roll, please?
Trustee McAbby?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
Trustee Birding?
Yes, and that motion passes. I move that we pay the bills. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Ms. Schultz, will you call the roll, please?
Trustee Birding?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
Trustee McAbby?
Yes.
And that motion passes. Administrator's report.
Thank you. Oh, sorry, thank you.
Go ahead.
There is a retrace resolution and the resolution is required by the county. So even though it's one road for, for less than $500, that's why we have the resolution. It is under our authority, but we need to provide that resolution from the board to the county. I wanted to say congratulations to both trustee McAbby and Shelley Schultz on reelection and congrats to the board on a very nice Veterans Day observance. Really was nice and it was fun to, um, see chief Thomas surprised. And, uh, really, it was nice and it was fun to, um, see chief Thomas surprised. And Barney Landry was fascinating and it is just a neat day. Other than that, we are working on holiday lights and looking to 2024, as Ms. Schultz said, with the appropriations report, uh, the annual report for 2023, the calendar for 2024, um, in the words of, um, we're just getting started and excited about 2024. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Monderhar? Okay, thank you very much. I move to allow the administrator to bid for better work as needed for the year 2024. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Bennett, for producing the extensive list for next year, thank you so much for that. Mrs. Schultz, will you call the roll, please?
Trustee Birding?
Yes.
Trustee McAbby?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
And that motion passes. We want to resolutions, Mrs. Monderhar?
Resolution 23-138, approving open purchase.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Ms. Schultz, will you call the roll, please?
Trustee McAbby?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
Trustee Birding?
Yes, and that resolution is adopted. Can we have the next resolution, please?
23-139, designating Fairfield Township roads for bid on the attached retrace estimate list, which is attachment A, and that is Georgetown Road. It's to be certified for funding upon the awarding of contract as determined by the Butler County Engineers Office, but the cost, and to be certified for funding upon the awarding of contract as determined by the Butler County Engineers Office, but the costs not to exceed $460.25.
Any questions or comments?
McAbby?
Yes.
Trustee Birding?
Yeah.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
That resolution is adopted. Next resolution, please.
With the west of Princeton Road, one project.
Second. Any questions or comments? Ms. Schultz, will you call the roll, please?
Trustee McAbby?
Yes.
Trustee Birding?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier?
$70,075 to U.S. This is.
Second. Questions or comments? Ms. Schultz, will you call the roll, please?
Trustee McAbby?
Yes.
Trustee Birding?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Can we have the next resolution, please?
Resolution 23-142, authorizing debt service payment of $393,472.40 to PNC Bank. This is a general obligation refunding bond tied.
Uh, any questions or comments? Ms. Schultz, will you call the roll, please?
Trustee McAbby?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
Trustee Birding?
Yes, and that resolution is adopted. May we have the next resolution, please?
Resolution 23-143, authorizing debt service payment of $527,496.99 to Huntington Bank for repayment, to Huntington Bank for repayment of $5 million general obligation bond, bond that would use for construction of the Public Works Building, remodel of the police station and improvements to Gilmore Road.
Motion adopted.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Ms. Schultz, will you call the roll, please?
Trustee McAbby?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
Trustee Birding?
Yes. Resolution is adopted. May we have the next resolution, please?
Resolution 23-144, authorizing Butler County Engineers Office to perform, perform a speed evaluation of the current generalized speed zone on Riggart Road.
I move to adopt resolution 23-144. Any questions or comments?
The heading was changed, but the rest of it is talking about Princeton Road to get in the State Route 4 bypass.
So, um, we would have to have a motion to change. Riggart.
We just lowered the speed limit on, on that section of Princeton Road. Did we pass the resolution for that?
Yes.
Speed study?
We did.
So where?
We can just, let's just change that resolution when we vote on it.
Do we need to have a motion to change it or?
Well, it hasn't been passed yet, so I think it's, she read the title properly.
Okay. So we don't need to change it and just change it, change the wording before we sign it. Say, safe road between the dead end and what?
I was just going to put reasonably safe on Riggart Road.
Reasonably safe, because it is the entire road.
You only have to read the title before you vote, so.
Okay. And then that would also be a change in section one to read the same way.
So it's currently at 35 and it's requested by a resident to be 25 miles an hour and the county felt like it made sense to go ahead and check that. Uh, there's a lot of traffic because of park and soccer fields. So I have, I have a lot of history here, I don't know if you, I can report on it now or I can send it to you either way.
That's a good idea, but, um, in the third paragraph, it needs to say 35.
Oh, unrealistic, okay.
Right, you said it's 35 now and it says on here it's 45.
Correct, correct.
That needs to be corrected to 35. And then, for it to be lower, so we'll see what the study shows.
Correct.
Currently on Riggart Road, it's 35. So that needs to be changed so that.
This is the opinion of the Butler County Engineers Office that it's worth investigating.
So it's my understanding that the generalized speed limit now is 35.
Correct.
That is unrealistic.
Okay, I'm.
Unless you won the game and you want to hurry up and get this law in. You want you home before the cops catch you.
I got pulled over, babe.
So we're going to vote on this?
Oh, wait till Ms. Schultz comes back.
Okay.
Also, if we want to take a look at the next resolution, the header is 21-145 on that, and I think that the date needs to be changed, correct?
Yeah, the resolution needs to read 23-145.
Yeah.
Catch that? Okay. Okay, so we can, we can.
Yes, trustee Birding?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
Trustee McAbey?
Yes, that resolution is adopted.
21-145.
No.
23-145.
23-145, thank you. I wasn't following. Resolution to reappoint Joe McAbey as a member of Butler County TID Board effective January 1, 2024, and expiring December 31, 2025.
I move to adopt 23-145.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Ms. Schultz, will you call the roll, please?
I'm sorry, who, who made the motion?
Uh, Birding moved, and Harkemaier seconded.
Okay, trustee Birding?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
Trustee McAbey?
Yes.
And that resolution is adopted. May we?
Resolution adopted. May we? Resolution 23-146, resolution for the designation of the administrator as the applicant's agent for funds approved for Fairfield Township through the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program.
Let's adopt.
Second. Any questions or comments? Second. Any questions or comments?
Want to tell us about it?
I'll talk to the majority. You can speak to. Speak to, yes. It's, I know it involved six residential units, but if you want to take it from there.
Thank you, yeah. So this is just the next step in the grant process for this. We have finally been awarded the funds. The state, the next requirement from the state is for us to designate, the board to designate a, what's the word they use? An aide to sign some of the, some of the agreements for the board. Again, as far as the process goes, once we move, once we do this step, funds will be able, will be able to start accessing funds for appraisal and then potentially an offer for the property. Again, so the, the grant amount that was awarded is $440,000 or 440, I can't, I don't know how to say that, $440,740.8. There it is. So that was the amount that was awarded. The board previously passed a resolution that we would match that at 10%. And again, this is just the next phase.
And this is the property down on Canal Road where it had multiple residents on the single-family lot that are falling apart and are health hazard.
It, exactly, exactly.
And in a flood plain.
That's right.
All the above.
All the above.
Okay.
That's the one.
Any questions or comments from the board? Thank you, Mr. Goins. Ms. Schultz, will you call the roll, please?
Trustee McAbey?
Yes.
Trustee Birding?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
And that resolution is adopted. May we have the next resolution, please?
Resolution 23-147, declaring nuisance and ordering abatement properties listed below and further authorizing the zoning administrator to initiate complaint. Properties include 4192 Milliken Road for vehicle parking and vegetation, Gilmore Road Menards for vegetation, 2600 Hamilton Mason Road for vehicle parking, 5438 Wesley Way for licensing of vehicles, junk, objectionable, noxious, or dangerous use practices or conditions, 4122 Tanya Trail for licensing of vehicles, junk, objectionable, noxious, or dangerous use practices or conditions, and 6659 Spring Meadow Drive for watercraft parking and vehicle parking.
Let's adopt.
Second. Comments? Ms. Schultz, will you call the roll, please?
Trustee McAbey?
Yes.
Trustee Birding?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
And that resolution is adopted. May we have the final resolution, please?
Resolution 23-148, approving the purchase of new Genesis Rescue Equipment from Howell, 3148, approving the purchase of new Genesis Rescue Equipment from Howell, excuse for state contract for the Fire Department in the total amount of $44,360, coming from the EMS Fund 2281.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Any questions or comments? Ms. Schultz, will you call the roll, please?
Trustee McAbey?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
Trustee Birding?
Yes, and that resolution is adopted. Announcements, offices are closed for Thanksgiving Day, Thursday, November 23rd and Friday, November 24th. Holiday lights at Bridgewater Falls on Friday, 24th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. Fairfield East Holiday Craft and Vendor Fair, Saturday, December 2nd, 2023, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. CSC meeting is Tuesday, December 2023 at 6:30 p.m. We make sure that gets noticed, correct time, and make sure that we put it on our calendars, because last time, we met at 7:00, even though it was set 6:30.
I was here, I was here at 6:30.
I know. Thanks for calling me to get me here on time. And Fairfield Township Board of Trustees meeting is Tuesday, December 12, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. Forum member comments? Trustee Hark, trustee Harkemaier?
I was, the Butler County Township Association reappointed me for another term on the OKI board. So I'll be doing that again.
Any other comments?
Nope.
Trustee McAbey?
I'd like to thank all the voters that reelected me for the sixth time. Not consecutively, but six times. I'll continue to be as diligent as I can for you, representing the whole township. I appreciate the support.
Joe and Shelley, I was up all night watching the election results for your race, Joe. I knew, I knew Shelley was going to win pretty easily, but it's a concern.
Right down to the [bleep] it always does.
No, it was, it was a great night for Fairfield Township, so. I want to thank the Veterans Committee for all their work. The Veterans Memorial has been officially, by Dr. Fred Valerius, officially completed. And it's beautiful out there. It's, it was a star attraction, obviously, of our Veterans Day observance. We had proclamations from our local state representative, our state senator, and our U.S. Congressman, as well as from the trustees to the Veterans Committee. I know they appreciated it very much. And we do have somebody 99.9% sure locked in to take over as the chair of the Veterans Committee, since these members are retiring. Is it safe to announce his name? Mr. Del Hodge, who is a retired military, he lives a stone's throw from here on Don Drive. And he has previously been a volunteer in our community scheduling our township fields for teams, as well as coaching many, many teams, youth sports teams from softball to basketball. And he's going to be a great asset. He'll bring a youth movement to the memorial. He'll be able to work with our administration and with the veterans that are sort of staying on the committee to make sure that the vision and mission of the memorial will continue for generations to come. I have full faith in him to do that, so I thank him as well. I also want to say a birthday to my father. I use his gavel. He, when he was in the 80s, he was the president of our local elementary school athletic, youth athletic department, volunteer group. And so he had this gavel, and he has given it to me. I've used it since January of 2022, but just now had the time to say thank you for that. But congratulations to him on meeting that milestone. So I love you, Dad. Many, many more birthdays to come. And I guess I should mention my mother's birthday is coming up in December, but first, Dad. Okay, at this time, it is necessary to recess to executive session under ORC 121.22G1 to consider the employment or compensation of a public employee or official. Is there a motion to recess to executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
The action.
There may or may not be action to follow executive session. I'm not sure. Ms. Schultz, will you call the roll, please?
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
Trustee McAbey?
Yes.
Trustee Birding?
Yes, and that motion passes. We recess to executive session at 8:00 p.m. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Bennett.